Empezamos con un anuncio de nuestros intérpretes para la interpretación al español. También lo vamos a escuchar aquí.
Tengo un mensaje breve bilingüe que voy a repetir primero en español y después en inglés. Pues buenas tardes, mi nombre es Regina Santos Moreno y junto con mi colega Hugo Santos estaremos aquí como sus intérpretes para el evento de hoy. Para facilitar el acceso lingüístico estaremos proporcionando esta interpretación simultánea entre el inglés y el español. Si nos están acompañando en línea y es usted bilingüe no tiene que hacer nada, pero si usted no es bilingüe y habla solamente español tendrá que elegir el idioma en el cual quiere escuchar la presentación. Así que si están en una computadora o PC verán un icono en forma de globo que dice interpretación del lenguaje. Haga clic ahí, seleccione el canal de español y haga clic en done para finalizarlo. Si nos está acompañando a través de una tableta o un teléfono, por favor busquen el menú de tres puntos en su pantalla. Hagan clic en el botón que dice interpretación, selección español y haga clic de nuevo en done para finalizarlo. Si nos están acompañando en persona y quisieran escuchar la presentación en español tenemos unos dispositivos disponibles para que lo puedan hacer. Como siempre les recordamos a todos nuestros oradores de recordar de usar el micrófono y más importante hablar a un paso moderado para que nosotros podamos seguir con más precisión todo lo que se esté diciendo. Gracias. So, good afternoon. My name is Regina Santos Moreno and along with my colleague Hugo Santos, we will be providing interpretation for today's session. So, to facilitate this language access, we will be providing the simultaneous interpretation between English and Spanish. If you are joining us online and you are on a PC or a computer or laptop, look for a globe icon on the bottom part of your screen that says interpretation or language interpretation. Click on that and select English. If you're bilingual, you don't have to select anything online, but if you speak only English, you will have to select the English channel to be able to fully participate and hear everything said in English. If you are joining us on a phone or a tablet, look for the three dot menu and then look for the link that says interpretation, select English and click on done to finalize the action. If you are joining us in person and would like to hear the presentation in Spanish, for example, we do have some listening devices available for you to be able to do so. As always, we would like to remind all of our speakers to remember to use their microphones and more importantly to speak at a moderate pace so that we can best follow along with the most precision with everything that's being said. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Appreciate it. And now, Mr. Porter, the pledge.
I'll ask you to rise in the most exciting time of the year in the education community as we have thousands of graduates across the county walking across the stage and getting their diplomas the last few days and the future few days. So as we salute our country, let us also salute all of those great students who have accomplished a major milestone in their lives. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Porter. And now we'll go to the roll call. Okay, Mrs. Porter, I see her here and I don't think she is online at this point. I think she's absent right now. Mrs. Dany is also absent. Mrs. DeWort. Thank you. Ms. Irman, here. Mrs. Frost, here. Mr. Howell.
Here.
Mr. Porter.
Present.
Thank you. I'm not aware of any changes to the agenda, so we will proceed with our president and board comments. We're missing Maggie and Mary Beth today. Mary Beth, we have attempted to use the new rules on teleconferencing for public boards and hopefully that will work and she will be able to join us at some point. As Mr. Porter suggested, May is definitely the season that we get ready for June with all the scholarship awards events and I'm pleased to have been able to attend four of them. It's amazing in our communities how nonprofit organizations and service organizations raise money for scholarships. So I went to the Minerva Club where they awarded, I think, about fifteen thousand in scholarships. Then I went to Saint Joe High School for their scholarship award ceremony. And then I went to Allen Hancock College for their award ceremony where they handed out about over five hundred thousand dollars to four hundred scholars. And then capped it all off last night with the Santa Barbara Scholarship Foundation in North County. The Santa Barbara Scholarship Foundation awarded a total of over seven million dollars this year in scholarships to just under two thousand students. And it just makes my heart sing to see the students being able to be given financial support to follow their dreams. And I think now we flipped the switch, June 1, and we're into graduations. And today is San Ynez High School's graduation to be followed by many more in the next few days. And at this point, I'll start any comments from board. Michelle.
Thank you. I attended the Santa Maria Valley Chambers Annual State of Education Event on May 9th and Dr. Susan Salsito really delivered that morning. It was a great night with the focus, or evening, I should say, with the focus on career education pathways and partnerships. And Noel Barthel did an excellent presentation and very professional, lots of great information. And I looked around the room and people were highly engaged. And then Dr. Salsito also convened four superintendents from Santa Maria, Orchid and Guadalupe. And it was really great to hear them speak and learn about them and their backgrounds and why they became superintendents. So it was an overall great event. And I attended the SBCEO Poetry Slam after our board meeting last month and that was really fun. That was a great energy in the room and I look forward to next year's. And then also we had the budget workshop with board president and with, let's say, Maggie Dany. And that was with Steve Torres and Nicole Evanson did an excellent job. And also thanks to Noel Barthel who showed up at the last minute to answer some of our questions. Thank you.
Mr. Porter. Poetry Slam. So I think next year, it was so fun that I think next year board members should participate. You know, it was really just, it was just a lot of enthusiasm and everything and it was just a fun thing to do. A lot of other great things going on, but I want to thank so many of the members of the staff as well as educators throughout Santa Barbara County who've been working so hard on space for TK classes as well as preschool. We solved, I think, our own little problem in SBCEO. There's a lot of challenges out there with space and even more so with staffing. So I salute everybody who's working so hard on those problems.
Thank you. I had the pleasure of being able to visit three schools, elementary schools within the Galita Unified School District yesterday. It happened to come together with Superintendent Susan Salsito and also the Galita Union School District Superintendent Diana Gagnio Gorbal. And so we got to visit Patara Elementary School, Camino and Isla Vista. And I was so inspired and just so appreciative of all of the work that the educators do in those organizations and at those schools. And each of them had a very unique specialty. And so, for instance, I really was very impressed at Isla Vista and just the international feel. There's a lot of influence from UCSB, a lot of the faculty and staff there and a lot of their children go to that school. But then there's also a lot of support from the students and they supported the staff there. And just all of the work that they're doing in the class, just making it very inclusive and focused on diversity. You go into the office and they have all of the flags of the world posted on the walls. And so it was just great to see just the love, if I can use that word, and the dedication that all the staff and the educators had there. And then at Patara, what was really that struck out to me is that they have recently embraced the positive behavior intervention support strategies, which included setting clear expectations of communication, focusing on teachable moments and really including everyone and their staff and the decision-making process. And the principal, Bridget Haley, has noted that since incorporating these strategies, there's been a sixty percent decrease in negative behavior outcomes, which we thought was really amazing. And then lastly, we were able to go to, oh wait, before I talk about Camino. They were doing a literacy campaign and so the sixth graders were getting together in groups and memorizing and reciting positive messages, our literature with positive messages accompanied by choreographed hand gestures and posture, you know, with your body. It wasn't full on dance, but it was like very choreographed. And we got to see two performances and some of you guys may know, like, I'm a crier. I get emotional and it was like everything I had, I was like, okay, I don't, I don't want to cry right now. But it was just so inspiring to see them coming together and delivering these positive messages and really feeling like they were incorporating those messages into their lives. So that was super inspiring. And then lastly, at Camino, we got to see the dual language immersion program in action. And just to see how this strategy of preparing these youth for the twenty-first century with being, you know, multilingual, you know, people in the world and citizens and how they strategize where they would do ninety percent of Spanish teaching in the first couple of years and ten percent in English. And then by sixth grade, it was fifty percent English, fifty percent Spanish. So by the time they leave, they'll be fluent in writing and speaking in both languages. And I just thought that that was amazing. So I probably spent all of my time, but I just wanted to share. I was super excited. And part of my, you know, my role as being a board member here, like for me, I really appreciate all of you here and the other board members, but that really is the highlight. And one of the favorite parts of this role is being able to see the educators in action and see just the rich and diverse dedication that we have and how the students are really absorbing that. And yeah, it's great to be there, so.
Well, don't ever be concerned about the amount of time that you take to tell the board about your adventures. Now I think we all feel like we were there. And so we've all shared in that. All right, we'll go on now to public comments. Do we, so? So it's just public comments for now. Okay. Hearing none, we'll move on to our presentations. And the first one is our Student Council, Student Advisory Council presentation and we're looking forward to this. Thank you.
Thank you so much for the opportunity to, first of all, greet the board. Thank you so much. Good afternoon. And to our audience today, it's really wonderful to see you. And as was mentioned earlier, this launch of graduation season feels so great. So congratulations to all around the county. It's been wonderful to see the community colleges graduations and now we've got our high schools started off by San Ynez today. So the Student Advisory Council, as we know, this was the first year, the inaugural year of having selected seventeen high school students to represent the Santa Barbara County Student Advisory Council. And here we are at the final board meeting where we've invited students from that first year. So we've got a first and the last all combined here together. And what was just displayed by the county board members and all of us at SBCEO is what we do, why we do it. It's all for our students and our schools. And so we launched the Student Advisory Council to check on ourselves, to say, how are we doing with launching students from our school systems? So so honored to have had seventeen individuals from around the county say, I'd like to serve. And so we have three individuals here today. As of yesterday, they were all tenth graders. Two from San Ynez are now juniors because their last day of school was today and they are celebrating their day by coming to the County Board of Education meeting. And Cabrillo High School has a couple more days left. But we have, I'd like to introduce and call up here actually and then we'll have them address the group today. So we've got Emmy Stevens, now a junior at San Ynez High School. Come on up, Emmy.
Yep.
Come on up. And Tobin Jory from Cabrillo High School, tenth grade. And Elon Torres from San Ynez, now a junior. Elon, welcome. And we can see Dr. Clara Fineran, Superintendent from Lompoc, joining as well from your school district, Tobin. Thank you so much, Dr. Fineran, for being with us today. Andrew Schwab and Michael Niehoff are in the throes of graduation in San Ynez. So they really wanted to split themselves and be here, but they're unable to be here with you. A lot of your rooting section here. So I'm going to turn over the microphone to the students and would love for you to just, you know, again, reintroduce yourselves if that's all right. Introduce who's here with you. We'd love to know who's here with you. In the months past, we had some, many seniors came and I realized, oh, they drove themselves here. And then we have sophomores, one who drove herself but also with accompaniment. But I want to make sure that you introduce your fan base as well, of which you're growing many. And so I'd like to ask them to, ask you to share about, a little bit about the why. Why behind saying, I'd like to be part of the student council, excuse my back. And then let's just have the introductions of yourselves and the folks who are here with you. The why and then say a little bit about maybe what you found in common as topics or issues in common that surfaced around the county. Because you were bringing your school and your experience and then we were learning about other people as well. So let's go with that and we'll just, we'll start right here. Emmy.
Hello, my name is Emmy Stevens. I'm now a junior at San Ynez High School. My mom and my aunt are here, Kami Stevens and Haley Dixon-Rehore. They both teach at Lockalina. I joined because a lot of my family works in education and both of my siblings got really involved with their communities and that was something that was really important for me. I think especially with everything that's happened the past couple of years in all of our schools, it's really important to, for us students to go in and to try to make a change because we're all seeing what's happening and we are the ones who, most of this is directly affecting. So it's really important for us to get involved. One of the common themes that I think we talked about a lot in our meetings was mental health. We all discussed how mental health is being handled at our school and how we would like to see it further being talked about and trying to de-stigmatize it, de-stigmatize it and try to find ways to help support students rather than the basic things that we've been doing with just saying that there are offices here, trying to like get them to be more engaged with students so that students can know that they are there and it's, they feel comfortable going to them. Another thing that we talked about, a little bit about, was trying to like reevaluate the way that we do certain things about, for example, like PSAs. A lot of us found PSAs to be very unhelpful with how we're currently doing them because right now a lot of it's just spewing information at us and as high schoolers, we aren't really taking it in at all. We're hearing it, but we're not really processing it because it's a lot of stuff that's irrelevant. Not relevant, but like it's not very engaging for us. We also feel like these PSAs don't really discuss the root issues of what, of why these things are happening. For example, with drug abuse, we don't really talk about the fact that a lot of students are using drugs to escape stress and a lot of that stress is caused by school. So rather than addressing that, we're more taught about abstinence and don't do drugs, drugs are bad, but rather than discussing why this is happening. Yeah, thank you.
Hi, my name is Tobin Jory and I'm a sophomore at Cabrillo High School in Lompoc. Today with me I have my grandma, Betty Jory, who she worked in education. She was a PE teacher at Lompoc Valley Middle School her entire career. And then why, similar to Emmy, my grandparents and my parents are all involved in education. Both my parents, my mom's a counselor at my high school and my dad is the principal at the middle school I went to. So I've just been surrounded by education my entire life. So it's something that really matters to me and I wanted to get involved in, especially because as an athlete, you travel to pretty much every school in the area and you see the good things and the bad things. And I wanted to come and be an advocate for my school in that we go to a lot of schools sometimes and we see things, oh, we wish we had that. Oh, we wish our school could do that. And so that's why I wanted to join was to be an advocate for our school and the things I hear from my teammates and my friends about things that they wish could be better at Cabrillo. And then some things that came about that I agreed with was the mental health coming out of COVID. We all spent a year locked in our rooms, like not really socializing. And it was hard for kids to get back to both the academic rigor that is in-person school as well as the social. Like people, it's just like getting back into being around everybody every day while dealing with the stress of school. Like high school's hard. So I think that was something big that we talked about as well as. Oh, the idea that a lot of times schools put forward that four-year university is your option after school. So I think we talked about a little bit about making it more publicized that you could go to community college. You can go straight to the workforce. You can go to the military. And so I think that was something that I really agreed with, that four-year university is not for everyone. There's great pathways that don't involve that and I thought that was something important. So thank you.
Hi, my name's Elon Torres. I'm now a junior at San Ynez High School. I'm here with my dad, Steven Torres. He has a little bit of experience in education, I'd say. So one of the reasons why I wanted to be a council member is because I feel like a lot of students at my school, they don't have the privileges that all the other students have and so they're kind of held back a little bit. And so I feel like it's my responsibility as someone who comes from a position of a little more privilege to look out for them and to contribute in any way that I can and make education as a whole accommodating to any circumstance. And so one of the things that I found in common with a lot of other council members was that, was that, I would agree with the PSA one. PSA is a lot of times kids just zone out because it's like another class for them. So I think it needs to be a little more engaging and maybe not like as everyone in the theater watching a presentation, but like in class, a group activity. And then another point I think that we all agreed on was that, sorry, I'm having trouble remembering. It was that, oh, student resources. So I think that in terms of like planning for your future and like college and things like that, we have classes, like I have Focus on Success at my school and it teaches us like options after college, like four-year university and things like that. But I don't think everyone is confident in exactly how to get there. So we need more like, how do you apply to college? And then like even more than that beyond college, how do you use your skills and find a job that you actually like? How do you apply for a job? And just like technical things like that. So yeah, that's what I think.
Right. It is such a delight to see the Student Advisory Council members come to our board meetings because the three meetings we had this year were all on Zoom. So when they come here, it's the first time we get to see, they see one another in person and I get to see them as well. Wanted to point out that Anna Friedland was part of the Student Advisory Council, Kami Barnwell, myself and Ann Roundy Hardy, so that whenever we had breakout sessions, we always had facilitators. Not that they needed them at all, but we were all together with the seventeen students and it was delightful. And just really served what it is that we were wanting it to do, which was to give us input. What's working? What needs some more support? You know, what's going well? What's in common? So I really appreciate you and appreciated the council very much. I have just one more question and I'm going to open it up to the board if you have any questions as well. But as you heard, this inaugural year, we set out with three meetings. And we thought, gosh, what is the right, what's the right fit? Is it ten? Is it seven? Is it one? Do we do it in person, online? And we thought, let's take a bite size that we can for sure, you know, really accomplish. And in some ways, I wish we had met a lot more. And in some ways, I wish we had met in person, but we did what we did. And so I asked the students here to say, you know, what else might have wished we talked about because we didn't get to everything? And what might we do to make improvements as we go forward next year? So I'd really love to get your feedback. And I'm going to open up to whomever would like to respond. You don't, all three need to, but we'd love, welcome you two. So let me just stand to the side and see what you have to say.
Personally, I agree with the thing about meeting more. I feel like three meetings was really good, but I feel like we didn't have enough time to all fully connect and discuss all of the issues. So yeah, I would say possibly more meetings and then the option for at least one being in person so that we could all like see each other and be able to discuss more.
Yeah, I also agree, more meetings. Sometimes it felt like there was a long time between and I would think about things and then by the time the meeting came around, kind of slipped my mind. And then I think in person, like you get to know people better, like and connect more. Like through a screen, it was hard to connect with people, especially when I was seeing them once a month. So I think more and possibly in person would help make it a more successful experience than it was. Like it was successful, but like even more. Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, I would agree with the more meetings and in-person things because I feel like it is a responsibility to represent your school. So we should be participating in things like this. And yeah, I think that would be helpful.
Thank you so much for that feedback and it's unanimous from the three, more and in person. We rarely hear more meetings. So to hear that, to hear that, you said that says a lot, actually. Let me turn it over to the County Board of Education to see if you have any questions for the Student Advisory Council today.
Question for any or all of you. You're very well spoken. Your representatives, two of you from the same school, but your representatives of your peers, what issues are there, maybe not to you, but you're aware of from your peers, that educators are just not aware of? I mean, five years ago, maybe mental health was not discussed. Now it's front of mind for students, for everyone. But are there any other issues out there that you're aware of, your peers are aware of, that are just educators, not that they're not trying to be aware, but are just oblivious to?
I think sometimes at my school, at least personally, and I can't speak for the other schools, we don't always have a very like common ground of what are the rules and what aren't the rules in terms of stuff. Like I feel like a lot of our punishments are very uneven of what will be given a punishment and what won't be. So I feel like I, as students, at least at San Ynez, I would appreciate more if we had more common ground rules of like this is something that you shouldn't, if both circumstances are something you shouldn't be doing, then both should be punished rather than one thing being punished and one thing being dismissed.
So for Cabrillo, we're a very diverse school because we have downtown Lompoc, which isn't the highest income area, as well as we have a military base that comes to our school. And just, there's a lot of different groups at our school and I feel like sometimes people stick to their own groups. The base kids stick with the base kids. A lot of my friends come from like the similar neighborhoods with me. So I think connecting our groups to like make us a more unified school is something that, I mean, you don't really think about it because everybody has their friends, but I think intermixing the groups.
I mean, you don't really think about it because everybody has their friends, but I think intermixing the groups will just make the school an overall, make it more like positive place to be.
And I was going to say that the main thing is student counselors. I think they have a, like one of the biggest responsibilities because they're the only source of like personal care in terms of students. So I think they should be held to a pretty high standard. I feel like at high school, they don't communicate enough. And for, especially for kids that don't have other sources of support, they're the most important, so.
Question, but since two of y'all are from San Inez, and I brought this up last month, but because you're here, 100 of your classmates came out to the cemetery on Memorial Day weekend to put all the flags on the graves of our veterans. And so if you would pass on to them our, our deep thanks for their time on a Saturday morning, on a three-day weekend in the middle of exams, giving up their time to come out and do that. It was a beautiful ceremony and deeply appreciated that they were there to, to, to show their respects.
Thank you so much for being here and taking the time. And I know you all prepared, you seem very, you know, well-spoken. And I, I love hearing your perspective. It really does sink in. My daughter and niece attended San Inez High School. And Elon and Emmy, I concur with what your concerns of the school with uniform rules and also the counselors. So I, we had that, we had that same experience. But my question for you is now that you all come from a family of educators, are any of you interested in going into the field of education?
I have an idea to address that and all, it just came to me, you guys have a lot of things on your mind. Some areas, I remember they had this in Santa Maria, a business could, business leader could be a principal for the day. And I think they made a contribution. So to let you see if your ideas work and maybe really whet your, whet your appetite for education, maybe could try each of you serving principal for the week. So just throwing it out there.
Will you do it? Same response. I'd like to ask, Dr. Finneran, thank you so much again for being with us. And I know that you're hearing the students' voices from around the county and in your own district at Cabrillo with Tobin. Just some reactions that you have, a statement that you'd like to make. Again, thank you so much for taking time to be here. Really appreciate you.
My, my pleasure, Dr. Salsito. Thank you so much for having me. And it was so wonderful to hear Tobin's voice, of course, and, and Emmy. And I think his name is Elon, is that right? Did I say that correctly?
That's correct, yes.
Yeah, so wonderful to hear our students' voices. You know, I, I find that we have to remind ourselves frequently that they are the drivers of our work and they are the heart of our work. So I just so appreciate their, hearing their voices. I want to share a couple of thoughts. One is we're working on redoing our mission and our vision statement here in Lompoc Unified. And we recently did what's called a Thought Exchange Activity. Then Thought Exchange is a platform that you can use to really easily facilitate feedback. And one of the beautiful things about Thought Exchange is that other people can then comment on the feedback that they see appropriately and, and positively. But we asked our students a series of questions. And one of the things that the platform does is it creates a word cloud. You know what a word cloud is, right? Like the, the words that are, that come up the most or that are responded to the most are bolded in and bigger in the thought, in the word cloud. And mental and health were the two boldest, biggest words from our students. And not that that was surprising to us, but it was very much helpful for our board and for our community as we start to work on our vision statement, which, and our mission statement, which we recognize needs to be holistic. So I, I just want to acknowledge that. And Tobin, I heard you on facilities. Don't worry, we, we're, we got it, we got it. We're gonna, we're gonna fix some things, right Tobin? So I'm just so appreciative for the opportunity to hear from our students. And thank you, Dr. Salsito, and the board for centering their voices. Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you, Dr. Finneran, appreciate you. And as you all know, Dr. Finneran joined the Santa Barbara County at Lompoc Unified in January. Did I get that right? Yes, January, okay. All the months get combined there, so real recently. And just been such a valuable member of Santa Barbara County, that is for sure. So with that, I want to say thank you so much to the students. We have for each of you a certificate of recognition, now somewhat old because it says 10th grade, Emmy. Sorry, Elon? It was while you were in 10th grade, you were on this inaugural council. And we put inaugural on your certificate because to me, it just, it's, it's pretty special to have been part of that first class. So I'm going to hand those to you in a moment. I think we're going to take a photo too. But don't worry, we have some sweets for you as well. So we're going to take, give each of you a, something to nibble on, on your way back. And with that, I will ask for a round of applause for our students. It's Friday. And now we will resume back to the agenda. Item number nine, presentation on the Santa Barbara County Education Office Local Control and Outaccountability Plan that are known as the LCAP. And I'd like to introduce Associate Superintendent of Educational Services, Bridget Boglitz, will provide a presentation for us. Ready, set, go. Okay, no pressure there whatsoever. We're getting the presentation up on the screen now. So thank you for having me. It's my pleasure and distinct honor to be here to present on our Local Control Accountability Plan for 22, excuse me, 23, 24. And I wanted to start by saying, my name is listed here for this presentation, but this work, I could not have done it without the assistance of Director Renee Wheeler for Juvenile Court and Community Schools, as well as our coordinator Shannon York, who have spent countless hours with me working on the LCAP. And I think I have the, got it? Yeah, thank you. So I'll begin with just a brief overview of the LCAP. And there are really four distinct sections. I want to make sure this works. Should be a click. It says it's on, isn't it this one and this one? All right, so the first one is the Budget Overview for Parents. Secondly, yep, is the actual LCAP, which includes goals and actions, metrics, summary reflections and educational partner section, as well as increased and improved services section. Thirdly, we have action tables included in the LCAP. And lastly, as a required element are the instructions. So you have a copy of the entire LCAP at your desk there. And I'd like to just go through some highlights briefly this year. In terms of the LCAP, it really acts as a guiding document, or some might say a strategic plan for our Juvenile Court and Community Schools. And our current LC, oh, current LCAP, excuse me, includes four goals, which outline our focus area for three years. And the 23-24 school year is the last year of this particular plan. And there are three broad goals that target specific areas of progress with measurable outcomes that were created in a cohesive and consistent manner. And additionally, there is one maintenance goal included in the LCAP. I'm going to break those goals down a little bit for you. Goal one is aimed at improving academic achievement, meeting the needs of our students with disabilities and English learners, and preparing students for college and career. And it includes metrics for four state priorities. State metric priority two, which is about state standards. Priority four around pupil achievement. Priority seven around course access. And priority eight around pupil outcomes. Specifically, our actions in this goal focus on improving student achievement on our CASP scores or testing, and providing credit recovery and intervention for our students, as well as offering A through G courses now that we have our WASC accreditation, and expanding our CTE program. Goal two is really aimed at improving school climate, student and parent engagement, and providing supports for our students and families. And it includes metrics for, three metrics for state priorities. Priority three, which is around parent involvement and family engagement. Priority five around pupil engagement. And priority six about school climate. Actions in this goal really focus on providing counseling services, behavioral health supports, and training for staff, as well as increasing parent engagement through parent outreach and communication. Goal three is aimed at improving educational outcomes for foster youth. And it includes metrics for state priority 10, which is the Coordination of Services for Foster Youth. This is a required state priority only for county offices of education. And the actions in this goal really focus on improving outcomes for our foster youth countywide through the increased collaboration of our community partners and creating better school stability for foster youth, and improving the youth and educational rights holders in the decision-making process. Excuse me, I said improving, I meant involving them. And goal four is really as our maintenance goal. So this is things that we have deemed that we're doing really well. We want to maintain progress on this goal. And it's specifically aimed at maintaining priorities one and nine. Priority one is focused on the basic conditions of learning, such as our Williams Report. So these come to the board. And also priority nine, which is around the coordination of instruction for expelled youth. The board may recall that we have a three-year triennial plan that was developed. We're also entering the third year of that plan. So you'll see that coming forward next school year. Specific actions in this goal focus on maintaining a robust base program for our JCCS students, and again, coordinating those countywide services for expelled youth. Another section I just want to highlight in the LCAP is what's considered the Increased and Improved Services Section. And this describes how the unique needs of our English learners, foster youth, and our socio-economically disadvantaged students were considered first in creating targeted supports and services above our base program to meet the needs of these students. And currently, 100% of our Juvenile Court and Community School students fall into one of these categories. And so in developing a plan to meet the needs of these students, we really focused on six specific targeted supports and services for our students. They include additional academic support provided through tutoring and intervention services, as well as professional development work groups. We've really been focused on targeting our staff in providing professional learning around ELA and mathematics specifically, and English language development for our English learners. Teacher-student ratios, we maintain a one to 20 ratio in our classrooms for our students to really provide that one-on-one and small group instruction, as well as credit recovery software. So we provide those opportunities for our youth. Another focus is mental health and CPI training, really looking at substance abuse, behavioral health training for staff, and offering those counseling services. And then lastly, supports for our English learners, looking at our English language development curriculum and instruction, as well as providing translation services for our families. As I mentioned, this year is the third year or last year of our LCAP. And we do an annual development process. And there's multiple steps in that process. The first process is what's considered analysis and evaluation. And this year, we really look at any existing plans we may have and our data to identify strengths and areas of needed improvement. And we look at our metrics, we assess our progress on our local indicators. Those will come to our board next week and review our data from state and local metrics. Step two, we gather educational partner input. And this is a year-long process with multiple groups. That includes both formal and informal input. And step three is really looking at our budget and calculating our estimated actuals and our planned expenditures for next year. Based on all of this, we revise our goals and actions and metrics and our budget is needed. During the analysis and evaluation process, we really look at first analyzing how we did in 22-23. And so we look at that metric data that's all listed in the year two outcomes. You saw that in the LCAP. And we identify again those areas of success and need. And then part two, we look at the effectiveness, what our planned actions are in terms of meeting our goals. And so in the LCAP, you'll notice there's some boxes at the bottom of each of the goals in which we write to the effectiveness of those actions. I want to highlight in this year's LCAP, some of our successes. Specifically, there are three that I'd like to call out. The first one is in our ELA ELD. In 21-22, those are our most recent statewide test scores. We actually saw an increase. We had 37.5% of our court school students and 50% of our community school students score at nearly met or met standard in ELA. And we've spent significant investments in that professional development work groups. And we feel like it's starting to really have an impact on our students' learning. It is our goal to reach 40% overall, and we're really close. We've met that in the community school and close at our court schools. So we were excited about that. Additionally, our parent-teacher conferences. In this previous year, we had 87.69% of our parents attend parent-teacher conferences. This is a slight increase from the previous year. We have been steadily increasing that. And I really attribute that to the changes that we've made with our parent-teacher conferences. We've been offering them via Zoom, we're offering them via phone. And we're really trying to connect with our parents to provide regular progress updates on how our students are doing. And so that's another success for us. Our desired outcome was 75%, so we've actually already exceeded that. So that's wonderful. And then lastly, as everyone knows here on the board, we did receive our WASC accreditation. And that is a huge success for us at all three of our school sites for the next three years. And so at this time, we are in the process of registering courses through the University of California Office of the President, U-COP. through the University of California Office of the President, Ucop, through their course management portal. And we are excited to be able to start offering some A through G courses with the start of the 2324 school year. Some areas of identified need. We still struggle with our math scores in testing. And we did see an improvement at our court school to twenty-two point two percent of our students scoring that nearly met or met standard. However, at our community school, we're still at a zero. And I will just say that many of our students, I believe I've expressed this before, come to us algebra deficient. And so that is really the foundational skills of analysis, synthesis, problem solving, and critical thinking. Some of those basic math skills are not there. And so this is an area that we continue to look at. We continue to provide professional development with, looking at our curriculum to see what can we do to improve this. Also, our CTE program. It is extremely difficult as a juvenile court and community school to meet the CCI indicators on the dashboard. And with the changes that we've made, again, significant investments in our CTE program. We've, as you know, have the Career Labs. We have started the manufacturing concentrator course. We'll be looking at adding to that. We've had a TOSA on, CTE TOSA, the last two years. We're also adding a counselor this year specifically to work with CTE. So we're really hoping that some of these changes will impact this, but we continue to work on that. And then lastly, I'll just say our graduation rate. We've had great success. We've had our graduation rate up at a hundred percent for the last several years due to changes we made with our graduation policy. This last year, we did fall to sixty-three point three percent. But that is really due to how a change that was made on the way that the graduation rate was calculated. We used to have a one-year graduation rate for, uh, dashboard for alternative schools, which is a DAW school, which we are. And due to the US Department of Education waiver that was denied, that wasn't an option this year, and so we see that decrease. I will say that when we looked at our local data, however, and we looked at our cohort of graduates, we did have a hundred percent graduate. So I am proud to say that that is accurate and maintained. But based on the new way that this metric is calculated, you will see that decrease. I briefly spoke about some of these highlights already, but I just want to let you know that specifically based on that analysis and evaluation, we are really trying to focus in this next year, this last year, on these specific areas. We, as I mentioned, are expanding that CTE program. We're hiring an academic and community outreach counselor. And we are able to offer a manufacturing capstone course if we have students who complete the concentrator. So that is, that is wonderful. Through that WASC accreditation, as I mentioned, we are registering our classes and courses to be able to be A through G eligible. And then under goal two, we are looking at really broadening behavioral health supports. You heard it mentioned earlier, this is a significant need. We are looking at the formation of what's considered a family navigator team. And this is through the Student Behavioral Health Incentive Program, or SBHIP. We've seen that brought to the board before. And we're looking at hiring a youth outreach mentor, contracting a substance abuse counselor, contracting an associate clinical social worker, and also working with a prometora. And this team is really, the purpose of them is to provide behavioral health intervention supports and services to our students and their families at each of our three school sites. In engaging our educational partners, we, as I mentioned, is a year-long process. We continuously gather this formal and informal input. And you can see from the slide, these are the number of meetings that we've conducted this previous year with the different groups. And we have many conversations through these meetings. We really look at student outcomes and analyzing student data. We work through issues and brainstorm solutions. And we really are looking at how can we better support the academic and social emotional needs of our student population. Something I want to highlight specific to this year, and really success in our parent outreach. We decided to try to reach our parent population in a new and creative way. And so we partnered with the prometoras to assist us in overhauling our parent survey this year. And they reviewed it, and they provided suggested changes to the survey to ensure that it was culturally and linguistically relevant for our parent population. Furthermore, they contacted individually every single family through phone calls and went through the parent survey with them. This was the first time we had done this. And through that process, we were able to reach thirty-six out of our sixty-five parents, which is about fifty-five percent of our parent population. This, while still at only fifty-five percent, is a huge increase. We, in the past, maybe had five, six, maybe max ten parents who completed the survey, so this was significant for us. Additionally, now that COVID has concluded, we were able to provide an open house at both Los Robles and Fitzgerald. And this picture here on the slide is of the Parent Information Night that was hosted recently at Fitzgerald. We again worked with our prometoras, and they, and using data that we'd collected through our surveys, the Parent California Healthy Kids Survey. We really narrowed it down to a couple topics. So this one was around youth mental health first aid and suicide prevention. Due to the success of this, we plan to continue these next year and are really excited to help boost our parent participation at the schools. These, this presentation again was presented in Spanish for our families. And lastly, we'll just take a look at our budget. There are multiple four, actually, components to the budget. One in the LCAP is we have to calculate and report our estimated actuals for 2223. And then we also have to include any of our budget adopted expenditures or planned expenditures for the subsequent year, so 2324. And then we also have to calculate our increased and improved services, concentration and supplemental funding that we receive, and how we're going to spend that. All of this is reflected in the Budget Overview for Parents, as well as the action tables at the back of the LCAP. I did just pull out a brief highlight for you here. You can see in 2223, our estimated actuals for our base program, this is everything except for those six targeted supports that I earlier spoke about. It's just about two point two million. And our estimated actuals and our increased improved services is two hundred and fifty-four thousand, roughly. In 2324, our planned expenditures, you'll notice, is about two point eight million. And then our increased improved services is about just under three hundred thousand. I do want to note that you will see an increase of about six hundred thousand dollars from 2223 to 2324. And that is because we are adding those two additional classrooms at Fitzgerald for this next school year. So we will have four operational classrooms. So that's where that difference comes from. That is my last slide. So I will say thank you and open it up for any questions or comments.
How many LCAPs have you done?
Oh, that's a great question, Judy. I believe that the LCAP started in 2013, and I'm going to check my thinking with, with Mrs. Barker over there. And so I have written an LCAP since its inception. So this is the tenth. Thank you. Yes.
Well, happy tenth anniversary.
Thank you. It is the highlight of my year.
I think that, to me, the most important part of this is the interaction with the parents. And how do, how is this section, the Budget Overview for Parents, shared with our parents?
You know, that's a great question. And so we've looked at, you know, we've shared the LCAP as a whole, which is, it's cumbersome. I'm not, I'm not going to sugarcoat it. It's, it's a lot. We, last year, I believe, the board asked about translation. So we have worked on translating this into Spanish, so we can do that. This year, I, I honestly, there's a new thing I just discovered, is that we can create an infograph of our LCAP. And so I have yet to do that. But it is on my list that we create an infograph for our LCAP, so it's digestible. Because I just think, to your point, we want it to be meaningful to parents. We, they don't, we don't want them to have to read how many ever, hundreds of pages it is. Have it there if they do want to read it, but also have a format in which they can easily look through and get the, the main components of the LCAP. So that's, it's on my list to get done very soon. Soon as it's approved and ready to go.
Engagement is really important. I have a question. I, I've never thought of this before. Do the kids at, at the Juvenile Court School, do they, can their parents visit them?
Yes.
They have visiting hours? Okay. Okay.
She doesn't have a mic. So as requested, or every Saturday, they're, they're eligible. I'll repeat Renee's for the microphone. Okay. Other questions you may have or comments?
Start with Mr. Porter.
Yes.
Bingo on the parent, she stole my thunder, but those are amazing statistics. Equal to or better than a traditional school, so it takes a lot of work. My hat's off to you. The other thing is behavioral health supports for court schools as opposed to the community school. Education-based behavioral health support, I assume probation also has a responsibility for that.
Correct.
How do you integrate that or coordinate it, or sort of a unified approach to those students?
That's a great question as well. There is, probation does have county B well who work and operate within the facility, both, at both facilities, I should say. So there's significant support that's kind of on an individual basis for each youth as needed or as youth are willing to participate through behavioral health. More, what we'll be able to focus on is some more like group settings. We can do things in the classrooms. So it isn't some of the like real one-on-one, but more holistically. How do we talk about, for example, maybe the substance abuse counselor can go in and give presentations, work with small groups. So it is sort of an, a, a system in which we need to collaborate quite a bit. We are in constant communication with them. They know what we're doing. While we don't always know the specifics of what each child is receiving in terms of individualized counseling services, we, we are aware of who's getting that and how we can kind of work together through those to support the child.
Good, good. Thank you.
First, I just want to congratulate you on completing this report. It's very robust, and there is a lot of information. And I found as I was reading it, it builds, it weaves a story. You know, it weaves the story of, you guys are probably going to get sick of me hearing this, but relationships and the importance of that. And you see that in the wraparound services that you were able to incorporate with your educational partners to really have that engagement with the parents, which is huge. Is to piggyback on other comments of board members. And I, and I do think a part, a big part of that is, is your focus on that engagement with those other entities and organizations. So I just want to say congratulations and kudos on that, because that's huge. And, and it does take constant, you see like the, the list of meetings and all the different meetings that you had. And so, yeah, I just really wanted to amplify that and just say that, you know, that is a focus. And I, I appreciate that that's a focus and a continued focus for, for you. Also, looking at the positive behavior intervention support, the de-escalation and restorative justice practices that you're doing with your behavioral health support, which is awesome. I love to see that. And then I would just, I, as I'm thinking about this, I always think about, you know, other psychosomatic strategies and restorative strategies, and just putting top of mind like utilization of meditation or movement therapy like yoga, or even connecting with nature through gardening and field trips as you're continuing to build out your, you know, your goals and your strategies and implementation, just to keep, maybe keep those top of mind as well, if you haven't already. So, yeah. Congratulations.
It's really interesting to read this, particularly after the visit that several board members made to Fitzgerald and to Santa Maria, the facility there. And I, I think about some of the things we saw firsthand. One classroom, I just saw a bunch of young men in a classroom, but all of a sudden, it was not appropriate for us to go in. The woman who was escorting us explained what was going on, the tension that was there, they were proactive. It, it, it really was a wake-up to just what they deal with every day. Also, speaking with a couple of students that just happened to volunteer. And then it, that was really meaningful to me. At Fitzgerald, I think it was at Thanksgiving, they were really excited about something. I think that was it. It, it's probably naive to think that a group of us can go in and stand in the back of a classroom and, and it educates us somewhat, but I'm not sure how we could do that better. But to me, if we can figure out an effective way to do it, if not, if it educates us at all, that's helpful. I, I have a much better perspective than I did. I also think if we do it right, it really makes the teachers and the staff and the other people feel like they're getting some attention and respect from us. The two guides we had in Santa Maria were, were remarkable to me because they were so genuine. They welcomed our questions. I hope they felt better respected by the fact that we were genuinely interested. So I think there's a double benefit if we can do that, and not all the time. But I, I, I hope we can continue to do that.
Absolutely. Thank you, Mr. Hough.
But I just wanted to acknowledge, I, I would love to see the faces of the people that had touched this document. If you could raise your hands or stand up, I'd like to see everybody. I want to see everybody saying, "Thank you. This is our team." Because that was very, very thoughtful work, and I, I did enjoy reading it. I'm one of those that like, and I, you know, write and scribble all over it because I get really excited. And I think they, I'm really happy to see that you had success with the English Language Arts scores. And that has, and even just little nuggets in there about the hundred percent participation in the FAFSA, helping them with the FAFSA application. That's a huge, that's a big deal with the foster youth. So I just want to commend everybody, and thank you for your work.
Thank you. Thank you.
I would just like to wrap up by saying that it's very apparent, I mean, it makes total sense that without English language skills, algebra would be beyond their reach. And that by improving the English language skills, we're at least putting a foothold in their future ability to be able to tap into mathematics. And in spite of the fact that this report itself is a typical government document that is just unbelievable, I love the way you and your team have been able, I appreciate the way you and your team have been able to glean out of it the meaningful and helpful and important pieces for you to focus on. So, well done indeed, all of you.
Thank you. Thank you.
And now, I will announce the opening of a public hearing in regards to the 2324 LCAP, including the Budget Overview for Parents. And we will see if there's any public comments. Hearing none. Hearing none, I will close the public hearing. And we will move on. It is quarter after three. Let's go ahead. Uh, then with item number 11, which is the presentation of the, um, 2324 County School Service Fund Budget. And at this time, I'd like to introduce Associate Superintendent of Administration Services, Steve Torres. And he will provide a presentation for us and probably some pieces from his staff as well along the way. Seems like there was something else I was going to say, but I can't remember it now. So we'll go on.
Okay. Well, good afternoon, board members. Um, I'm pleased to be presenting to the proposed, uh, 202324 adopted budget. Um, we'll wait just a moment for the slideshow here to come up.
Last week, our budget board committee met and that included myself and Michelle DeWort and Maggie Dane. And we were, um, very much satisfied with the answers and the information that we were given about the budget. And I think left that meeting feeling pretty confident with it. So we look forward to reaction from the rest of the board today.
Great. Thank you so much. So, um, again, um, thank you for having me this afternoon. Um, I'm going to start, uh, by thanking the, the team that helped to put this together. Um, it is a lot of work and it's a, it's a kind of a year-long process, a collaborative process. Um, so a special thanks to Nicole Evansen, um, Adeselie Vazquez and Patrice Nelson, for all of the time and energy that they put into us. Uh, and like I said, it's, um, you know, we have these clear concise documents that we see in front of us in the budget and the board budget book. Um, but it is an ongoing process throughout the year, working very closely with, um, program and department directors to, to put this together, um, for everyone. Um, just a couple, as we're, you know, presenting, uh, the proposed budget, um, a couple of items that are still coming up in the deadline that take place after adoption of the budget. Um, June 15th, the legislation, uh, will submit the budget to the governor. Uh, there was a May, May revision that took place in early May. Between then and June 15th, um, there's changes that are made to the budget. That budget then goes to the governor, uh, for signature veto, um, July 1st. Uh, this year we have this unique element of the October 16th tax filing deadline. Really the impact to the budget, um, in that regard is that gives us a more, um, definitive idea of what revenue will be, um, as opposed to having those numbers, uh, you know, in April, like a normal tax filing time. And then a little bit on the process that we use for the budget. Um, it is a single adoption process, which means the, uh, budget that we'd be adopting next week, um, would be the final budget. Um, we do know that numbers can change. Uh, we know that revenues expenditures will, uh, change throughout the year. Um, and our process for addressing that is at first interim. So at first interim, uh, for that report in December, we update all those numbers, um, again, revenue and expenditures to kind of bring the budget current at that time. And I too will reiterate what you said, uh, Ms. Frost regarding the, uh, the meeting. I thought it was a great meeting and I want to thank you as the chair, um, Ms. Dany and Ms. DeWort, uh, for their participation, engagement and questioning. Um, I think, uh, the perspective that you provide, um, is really helpful, um, in ensuring that we're presenting this uh, in the clearest and most concise way, um, as well as considerations for presentations and content in the future. So, um, really good conversation. And then what's not on here, because it was kind of a little impromptu, um, um, but Noel's participation on a specific program to be able to contribute a lot of details in a, in a very fluid program, especially this year. So in terms of format on our budget, um, you know, we use the standardized account code structure. Uh, and essentially what that does is create a clear separation between our general fund, um, and the child development fund. So, um, in the information that you see preceding the tables and graphs, uh, we'll be referencing the general fund and child development fund. We'd be putting them together for some, um, of the information. We'll break them apart for some of the, uh, other information. Uh, so the first graph that we'll look at, um, is again, this is our combined general fund, uh, and child development fund. And these are the budgeted expenditures by percentage for our support services. Um, and you'll see the 74% is for student support, um, directly, the 13% for district and school support, uh, 7% for internal support, uh, and 6% for excess property tax transfer. Um, a couple of things to note, uh, as we look from one year to the other, uh, the student support, um, services as well as the internal support remain the same from last year, those percentages. Uh, and the excess property tax and district school support kind of swapped out a percent. Um, excess property tax was about 7% last year and district and, uh, school support was about 12%. So we're looking consistent from the previous year. Um, and then just a little note on this 6%, the excess property tax transfer. Um, you know, we bring it up in each of the interims, but this idea that it's excess, it's property tax is coming in. Uh, so it is a revenue, but then we turn around and give it right back. So it is an expenditure. So a little example on that. Essentially it's taxes, uh, dollars, uh, beyond the LCFF calculation. So in the example that we provide, uh, we'll look at a basic aid district, uh, and a basic aid district. Uh, say that their taxes for LCSF calculation was 8,000 and, uh, the actuals ended up being about 2,000 above that. Um, basic aid districts retain that. It's the advantage of a basic, uh, of a district aid based on their kind of tax structure. Um, if we look at SBCO, we have our, uh, LCFF calculation, um, our taxes that are included in that. Um, anything above that. So in this case, there's $2,000 in this scenario. Um, we return those. Like I said, uh, it's a refund and those are designed, uh, to fund, uh, trial courts. So just a little note on that because it does come up in each of our budgets, uh, in each of our periods. So then we'll kind of jump into the, uh, the 74% of that. Again, we're still with the combined general fund and child development fund, um, for student support services, specifically that 74% that you saw on the initial chart. Um, 1% of that is career technical education, uh, 3% is juvenile court and community schools, uh, and the 6% for other student services. Uh, we like to list those out, um, because you're familiar with a lot of these programs. The Partners in Education, uh, Children's Creative Project, uh, Children and Family Resource Services. Uh, we've heard the Prometores mentioned a couple of times. They fall under that category there. Um, 28% for special education, uh, and 38% for child development. And then if we look at the remaining, uh, 26% um, of the combined, uh, general and child development fund, um, that's 6% excess property, uh, tax transfer, our 7% for internal support. That's essentially our overhead and that has remained consistent from the previous year. That's our fiscal services, uh, human resources, maintenance and operations. And then the 13% for district and school support. We know there's a lot of activity that takes place there. So we basically put as many as we could fit, uh, in this little graph, but that includes, and there's many more. Um, that includes educational technology and digital learning, uh, teacher induction program, local, uh, control and accountability plan, curriculum and instruction, information technology services, school business advisory services, administrative credential programs, uh, and differentiated assistance. We tried to capture as many there as possible because it's a 13%, but there's obviously a lot going on in each of these, um, here. So the, the next, uh, graph and final graph is really just taking those percentages that we presented, uh, initially and attaching a dollar amount to them. Um, so kind of in lieu of reading each of those amounts to you, uh, if we look at the total, um, of the 120 million, 469,000, 460 dollars, um, that is what, uh, all of our, you know, total expenditures for support services from the combined general fund, uh, and child development fund would equal. So we'll, we'll transition to some tables here, kind of some numbers. Um, and we'll look at our 2023 estimated actuals. So those are the totals that, um, at the time that we prepared the budget, um, are what we estimated would be spent at the end of the year. Um, so again, those numbers as estimates may, you know, change and that's addressed, uh, like we mentioned in the first interim. Um, so this is a, a comparison. So we can see how we ended this year or how we projected we're going to end this year, um, and what we're budgeting for the upcoming year. Because this is combined, um, with the general fund and child development fund still, um, it's going to be more detailed and more beneficial in the next three tables that follow that break out the general fund unrestricted, the general fund restricted, and then the, uh, standalone child development fund. So we can see what the activity is in those. But you will notice, just to make a connection to the previous, uh, information, that, um, under the 2324 proposed budget, if you went down to the expense, that 120 million, 469,000, 460, that is that total from that pie graph, uh, the previous pie graph. So this is really just a, a table representation of that. But like I mentioned, I think there's more information, um, to be had here in the general fund, um, unrestricted program, uh, individually. Um, and so I'll kind of walk down, um, our beginning balance, uh, for 2324 in the proposed budget is 9 million, 980,341 dollars. Um, our revenue, uh, is a little over 28 million there. Uh, expenses would be over 30 million. Um, and that would leave us with an ending balance of, uh, 829,0218 dollars. So if you notice the difference, um, between the, uh, expenses and the revenues, obviously the expenses are greater there. Um, and that reflects, uh, deficit spending of about 1.7 million dollars. Um, it is always the goal for the deficit spending, um, to be addressed and reduced, um, by the end of the year. And so just a little background on that, over the last three years, the previous budgets, um, we began with a deficit, um, a planned or adopted budget deficit of anywhere between 800,000 to about 1.5 million in any one of those three years. Um, in each of those years, we were able to address, um, the deficit and end up with a surplus. So, um, not that that's always a trend that we want to continue, but, um, you know, it has been a trend that reflects that we should be able to address that. Um, and we'll do our best to address that during the year. Um, a couple of things contributing to that. Um, and I'll note here, uh, you know, we have, um, we have built into this our, our, our 4% salary COLA, um, a 13% increase in benefits that we kind of build into our budgets every year. Um, you'll notice that last year, that estimated actuals ending balance, um, it increased. Uh, we did have a surplus that added to that. Um, so this year, uh, one of the, uh, factors contributing to the, uh, the deficit is a one-time, um, off-schedule stipend for staff. And so that is captured in the unrestricted program because that is our most, um, flexible, uh, spending. Um, and by being able to kind of borrow essentially some from the ending balance from the previous year and building some into the deficit for this year, it's a unique opportunity, um, to be able to, uh, apply that stipend, um, to all staff. Uh, and one note on that is, is, uh, Dr. Solcedo has kind of excluded herself, um, from that particular, uh, activity. But, um, but, uh, that is one of the, uh, elements of this particular, um, fund right here. The next is our general fund restricted programs. So in many cases, uh, the funds for these are assigned to specific programs or a certain number of programs that it's limited to. So it's a very structured, um, a very structured fund. Uh, and so you'll notice, uh, in this particular case, um, you know, we'll have an ending balance for this budget uh, at 10 million, 348,459 dollars. Um, and that is a, a reduction in the ending balance. But with the restricted funds, um, typically that's kind of where we'll see them land based on the, the, the fact that they're only assigned to certain programs. So we're not able to, um, uh, address the, uh, the deficit of another program by pulling money in from somewhere else. Uh, and then the child development fund, um, thing I'll note on, on, uh, this particular fund is that, uh, if you look at the estimated actuals from 2223 and 2324, um, they're very consistent. Um, and so in terms of, uh, you know, from beginning balance, revenue, expense to ending balance, uh, essentially what we're seeing here, uh, is that the programs are kind of operating consistently from year to year. Uh, and after the table, some things to note, um, in terms of new expenses, uh, and some of these are captured, uh, within the budget. Some of them, uh, when we continue in the year and continue our planning, uh, may be addressed in first interim, but we know their priorities in terms of what we're, uh, incorporating into the budget. Investment in school safety, uh, we heard a presentation in previous meetings regarding the investment in staff and structure to be able to support school safety throughout the county. The one-time off-schedule stipend for staff that I mentioned, um, additional contributions for support for special education, uh, and then modernization of facilities and technology infrastructure. So, um, just kind of throwing it out there as general idea, since we're just talking about the budget and we don't have the specific, you know, any specific items in there. This is kind of a, a kind of a big picture here. Uh, and then I kind of revisit, uh, the combined general fund and child development fund. So this is the same exact table that we started with. The idea is that, um, we, we started with the general table, broke it down into the three and then just revisit this, um, essentially just recapping the fact that, um, you know, this is where our budget lands. Um, and, uh, this is the budget that, you know, we'd be, um, bringing forward for approval. And another big component, um, that tells us where we are and kind of the viability of the budget going forward is our multi-year projection. Um, this includes, uh, our funding, our ending balances for, uh, or our reserves for 2324 plus the next, uh, two subsequent years. Uh, and so what we can see here, um, is that we have a very healthy reserve, um, uh, for this upcoming year with, uh, the proposed budget for 2324 as well as, uh, the two years that we're projecting forward. Uh, and again, I'd like to, uh, thank you for your time and consideration. Um, and again, another big thanks to the team that helped to put this together. Um, you know, I said Adeselie, Patrice, um, as well as Nicole and their team. Um, again, for all the work, uh, and collaboration that's gone forward with this. So any questions at this time?
Thank you very much. Um, on the proposed adopted budget slide next to the last one, I guess, um, it doesn't, it's the new expenses for 2324. That's for combined funds and child development, right?
Correct.
Okay.
It's coming out of it.
Any questions from the board, Dr. Mr. Porter? I just promoted you.
So again, congratulations. There's a huge amount of work behind this 15-minute presentation, especially with all the different categories and with our core population versus the associated programs. So, you know, that's a lot of work. Um, so the thing that really sticks in my craw, and you won't be surprised, is the 6% very poorly named excess property tax transfer.
Yeah.
So it, most of y'all are property taxpayers, right? And you're told that 50 cents of every dollar that you pay in taxes goes to education. Well, they're lying to us. If they take this back and fund something else with it. So, so Monique Lamonde and people like her come and drink our wine at our, at our celebrations. Have we ever addressed this with her? She would be part of that decision-making body, uh, that literally, and I'll say this in a very harsh way, that literally they are stealing money away from our students' education to pay for other things to support the budget. Is there a forum where we could address this with her to try to change the way Sacramento works?
What we could do with that property tax, and it is going to trial courts as, um, Steve shared, which was a decision made years ago, um, at the state level, of which county offices, county boards have really petitioned and advocated that it change. And it, it didn't get very far. Um, and so there are other county offices. I can, I actually don't know the number off the top, but I want to say around eight to 10, maybe a few more now, that are in the same boat as, that we are in. And so, um, I can say that for sometimes there's not a lot of empathy around basic aid and excess property taxes, um, anyway. I mean, we hear that with our basic aid or community funded districts. And, um, we've also been really, really fighting for, I'd say fighting for, pushing for, advocating for juvenile court community funds as well. I say that just for context. The question, the direct question you're asking is, is there a forum? Absolutely. There's a forum for it. I think it would be really important that there's a, a, a concerted effort versus, I think it would be more effective to have a concerted effort with the other county offices in the same vote, which again, has happened, pushed, pushed hard, especially with our partners at Capital Advisors. They really convened all of those county offices. It's probably been about three years now, two years since that big push happened. Um, but we can, we can surely address it again. And we, we really do. What we could do to serve our students with that funding is really at the core. It's not, it is a lot of money. Yeah. So I hope that addressed the question as well as give you some context too.
So just to be specific, does Monique Lamonde, if you know, and I don't expect you to necessarily, do you know if she knows about this issue?
You know, since she's been in her office, I don't, I, I, I want to say yes, but I'd have to double check. So it's been, it's been a couple of years now, to be honest. So I need to bring that back. Yeah. Thank you.
In the county. Uh, what's in?
What's the number of basic aid?
Eleven, eleven of twenty.
And that's, I know some have gone in and out, but that's generally, say, over the last ten years, that's an increase, correct?
We've been really at ten or eleven, and we've been at eleven for the past many, many years. So fifty percent is what we used to say ten years ago, and now we say eleven of twenty.
Information and, I did have just one question, I don't know, but I, I don't know if it would make any sense, honestly, but on page sixteen, there was a list of, of description for programs and then the estimated actuals and then the proposed budget, but all of the career technical education, the Cow Works and Cine programs, the K-12 Strong Workforce Program and Escape Finance System, Financial System, had an estimated total for twenty-two, twenty-three, but nothing in twenty-three, twenty-four. And I was just wondering why, since that was, that's a pretty good, you know, a robust program that we're doing.
Nadia, you have a keen eye, the Budget Committee hit the same question with them.
Okay, is that working now? Oh, okay. Oh, oh, sorry. Okay. So, so part of it has to do with the, the cycle of, of funds. So there are funds that are expiring that won't be budgeted for this year, but those are sometimes replaced by the next cycle of that same funding. And so because we're not sure, you know, at the time that we did this, and even at this time, there's still funding that would be, that we're still up for, you know, would be an option for us, but we haven't received it yet. So we budgeted, or we indicated at the time what we know we will be receiving. So that's why you might have seen money last year, but not dollars budgeted this year.
And then when would we know?
It's kind of rolling cycle. So there's already funds that, that we've, we know we're receiving, but we didn't know, you know, six weeks ago, four weeks ago, when we were plugging in the numbers. So it's kind of a rolling cycle for various grants and funds. But something definitely that I think, you know, we can highlight at first interim, second interim, to talk about kind of what that looks like, because I, it may just get lost in terms of, oh, it wasn't here and now it is. So I think that's a good point in terms of how we can highlight that in those presentations.
And if I may also include, great question, thank you so much, is to say that when we do receive grants, or when we, when you do receive some new funding or a, you know, something that we've been expecting or, or, or seeking, I do try to put the comments in the superintendent's report as well, because the first interim report wouldn't come before the board until December. And so it is, it is a ways away. So try to give those updates along the way, but they do, it is all year round, the information that we get, and we don't have it all at the time of, of print. Yeah. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. And do I see a friendly face out there in the audience? Hi Debbie. Okay, we will move on then with the public hearing on the presentation of the twenty-three, twenty-four service fund budget. Public hearing has begun. Hearing no comments, I will close the public hearing on the budget. And at this time, I would like to call a ten-minute break. So we will come back at three forty-five and wrap up the rest of the board meeting. So ten minutes, folks, three forty-five. All right, I will call the meeting of the school board back to session, please, and we will turn to our superintendent, Dr. Salsedo, for the superintendent's report.
Fantastic. Thank you so much for providing with the opportunity to share some of the, expand on some of the items within your report and add a few items as well. But today, I'd like to actually ask Ellen Barger up to the podium to, to speak about this incredible math, science, and computer science statewide professional development grant. Thank you, Ellen, for having me here, yes. And as Ellen is turning on the microphone and positioning to speak, I wanted to say, one, Lauren Aaron-Gurin, there's an N missing from her name in the report, so I'm sorry about that, Lauren. Lauren is here, right here, and she's named as part of this update, as well as Kate Tollni. So thank you both for being here. And Ellen, I'm sure you were going to reintroduce them too.
I will.
Please say, please say this, say more about this exciting grant.
Wonderful. Thank you, Dr. Salsedo. And just as you said right before the break, during the superintendent's report, we update about grants and other unexpected sources of revenue. And so this math, science, computer science statewide grant was created through last year's budget trailer bill, and then the request for applications was released in the late winter, and we partnered with San Joaquin County Office of Ed and Monterey County Office of Ed, and I'll say a bit more about that in just a moment. And on May tenth, we realized, or we were notified, it's May eleventh, that we had been given this grant. So this grant is a fifty million dollar grant over, just over three years, for statewide communities of practice in mathematics, science, and computer science. And what that really is built on is in twenty-sixteen, with San Joaquin County Office and our county office, we took the lead through the Curriculum Instruction Steering Committee to create communities of practice. And what that really was, was professional development for the people who do professional development. And it was so successful, and then it was funded at the time by the S.D. Bechtel Junior Foundation, and then they ended, and the thing ended. So there's been some real lobbying work to bring this back because it is so effective. And so the computer science was also added. So in these three areas, this is one of the most substantial grants and investments that our state has given. And they've entrusted our three county offices because we have been the leads for mathematics, science, and computer science through the Curriculum Instruction Steering Committee, which is part of the California County Superintendents. And so we're going to be using our existing structures and our past practices to build both a statewide community of practice in all of those areas, but more importantly, in each and every county, the communities will build their own sustainable communities of practice. And this is something that I really pushed for, because most of these grants tend to be a hub-and-spoke model, where all of the resources go to a region that's supposed to serve a really large region. But we thought it was really important that each and every county, not only does some asset mapping of all of their current partners that help with mathematics, science, computer science, including the subject matter projects for math and science, and the Computer Science Educator Workforce Investment Grant, which we are the regional lead for, our region on that as well. So the first year is going to be focused on simultaneously building the statewide community, and we actually had our first meeting last week, and then helping each of the counties build that out. And so as Dr. Salsedo said, Lauren Aaron-Gurin is our Director of Equitable Learning Systems, and she helped with writing the grant and will be one of the chairs of the steering committees, bringing all of it together. Lauren and Kate have been our computer science leads for, and we, Santa Barbara County Education Office has been one of the pioneers in implementing the computer science standards. And so they've both been very involved in that. So the math, the computer science, and we'll be hiring a science specialist and another math specialist as well through this. Now, it's fifty million dollars for the whole state, so it's not all coming to us, but we're very excited about this opportunity to take our expertise and our relationships that we have built throughout the state and make sure that every single community builds their ability to have sustainable learning for their educators in math, science, and computer science.
Really exciting. Thank you very much. Thank you, thank you, thank you, Ellen. I initiated applause because superintendent's report gave it applause, I mean, it's pretty good. No, thank you, thank you very much for all of the incredible work and leadership, statewide leadership, and for the design of, in which you will be sharing the knowledge and, and building capacity. A couple other points I wanted to highlight. On page three, for the Educational Services Division updates, the name of the update itself has a name change. So we're, we're actually changing the name of the division of Educational Services to Student and Community Services Division. And one, I wanted to share with you why, one, just so that you simply knew that that's a change, it'll change what's on Bridget's and Shannon's door when you open the door, name tags, but website and things like that. But in county offices, in the, there, there are, there's typically student services and educational services. And here, we had the student services support called Educational Services, and then we have curriculum and instruction instructional services. Educational Services, Instructional Services, people were always wondering, what does that mean? So we're, we paused, thought, Bridget went through a process of, of thinking through with her team, what are some of the names that are, that are familiar within the state? What really represents who we are in the division? We worked together as a cabinet team, and so wanted you to know that that's coming. So wanted to pause there on that. The third, the next update is on Children's Creative Project. Again, a thank you to the County Board of Education, along with our cabinet team, we contributed to the largest square available at E. Modernari over the Memorial Day weekend. And when you go to the Santa Barbara Mission for E. Modernari, traditionally every year and this year included, at the foot of the steps of the, of the, of the mission is the featured artist, a really big portrait, featured artist. Well, right next to the featured artist was our square. And that square was dedic, is dedicated to all of the SB CEO employees in light of May being Classified Employees Week and teacher appreciation and all of the appreciation. So I wanted to show you a minute and thirty-second clip of some of the work at E. Modernari, chalkwork at E. Modernari, the art, excuse me, and the final slide, I believe, will show our square. All right, we'll, we'll stop the video right there. But so that drawing was on Monday at about around noon, is the status of that, that portrait. And it was selected, first of all, the artist was, was thoughtfully selected by Kai Tepper and John Hood, who's a professor of art at Allen Hancock College that many of you met, Deborah Hood's husband. And the art piece itself was selected with, with us in mind, really thinking about a child, imagining, imagination, creativity, thinking and, and learning. So that was just a beautiful, in, when you're there, I see it and it's very captivating, it's just really breathtaking. And again, right at the steps of the mission. So thank you so much for your contributions. Thanks for the video, everyone. Also want to share that at your places, you have the budget presentation from Capital Advisors. The PowerPoints are pretty dense, it says it all, I believe you have it there, says it all, but we are obviously keeping a very close eye on the juvenile court and community school proposal. And the, just the base rate alone, the three hundred thousand that we would receive for our court schools, three hundred thousand base rate for our community schools, is definitely better than what we have now through our LCFF funding formula. We would stand to lose, stand to gain more in our community school actually than our court school in this formula, but we're just, we're still calculating and seeing what it would mean. I think in this case, more would be absolutely better for us to serve our students and, and the goals in the, in the LCAP plan that you just heard earlier from Bridget and the team. And then a final thank you, I, one of the comments Mr. Porter made at the beginning with board comments had to do with facilities. And facilities across Santa Barbara County for our schools is, is, is a main focus. As schools expand transitional kindergarten courses and programs for their students, preschool is still a huge need, and one is somewhat bumping into the other in terms of existing facilities. We knew for special education for SB CEO, we still have needs because of those domino effects. But one area we needed right away was a preschool facility in the San Andres Valley. And Mary Beth Galis and Kirsten Escobedo and Steve and myself, sorry if I've forgotten somebody who was on this already, a lot, we said, you know what, let's contact Bruce Porter and Michelle DeWort, who live in the valley and could help us identify some potential spaces. So we huddled after last month's board meeting for about fifteen minutes and said, if we need you, we're gonna, we're gonna call on you, I hope we can do this. And we did it. We came to a Zoom meeting, or excuse me, Zoom and in-person meeting, about forty-five minutes, brainstormed many, 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 many great viable places, we, we really believed. And as a result of the conversation, it really motivated lots of other conversations, and we have a place, a preschool for our special ed facility starting next year, which looks like it's really, really, we're really, really close. Big thanks to Mr. Porter, Mrs. DeWort for your support, for our team as well, and a big thanks to Buellton Union School District for saying, you know what, I think we can make this happen. And they, they've built a new facility for TKK, they have a classroom now that we can use for preschool, so we're, we're close to it being ready to go, and I feel comfortable enough to share that with you publicly. So really want to say thank you for that teamwork. I will stop there and turn it over to the board to see if there's any comment or questions about the superintendent's report.
For organizing that, I thought I lived very close to it and, and it, there had to be twenty-five percent more people every day than ever. So it's, it's so successful. Some of the neighbors might not agree, but I thought it was wonderful. I thought it was so clever to go early, to see the piece, but it was, the first time I went, it was very cleverly protected. So all I saw was a very effective protection. So I went back, took a picture of it, it's a better picture, but it was, had to be the best E. Modernari ever. But it was, had to be the best E. Modernari ever.
All right, then we will move forward to a presentation on the Universal Pre-Kindergarten Mixed Delivery Grant. And I think Kirsten Patterson? Christian Patterson. Close. Will provide a brief presentation for us today.
Yes, please.
Green? Okay, green. Okay, there we go. Let's try that again. Hi, I'm Christian Patterson. I serve as the Childcare Planning Council Coordinator for Santa Barbara County, as well as one of the Managers of Early Care and Education.
And I'm Christina Ortega, Director of Early Learning Support under the Curriculum and Instruction Division. And so we are here today to present information related to the Mixed Delivery Planning Grant. During our previous board meeting presentation, we shared some of the similar information to you related to the Universal Pre-Kindergarten. And we're here today just to make those connections and alignment as we begin to blend, braid, and layer some of the many components to this new grant. And so we know that UPK is an important part of a statewide effort to provide whole child support for children and families while we transform, while we begin to transform California's schools and have these schools be more community focused and equitable. Also, with UPK implementation, this will look different across the many regions in California, but also across our county. We need to make, ensure that we are partnering with local tribes and also community groups as necessary in order to build these successful UPK programs. By providing the community with multiple care options for families of three and four-year-old children, we have greater access to, who need greater access to quality care. We know that quality early education provides strong foundational skills, which will help children become more successful in grade school and beyond. Early learning TK and TK to 12 system leaders need to leverage their expertise to build and bridge and create a system that puts the needs of children and family first. Building on that work has already begun and some leaders will need to work, we need to continue building this work by building that rapport, the trust that we need, and support effective transitions. We need to also engage and empower our families. We need to expand and support diverse and effective workforce pipelines and also align programs to meet child and family needs. So when we envision a countywide network of educational options for families of three and four-year-olds, it is extremely important for us to remember that families have a choice. The parents' choices can be made based upon a wide range of factors, such as cost, schedule, location, and care setting preference. So as the rollout of UPK continues, it is important that we provide families with information about all of these options so that they can be more informed about their decisions. And so this is where this grant comes.
Okay, so now we'll be discussing funding and expectations and outcomes related to this grant. We'll also discuss our initial plan for how we will utilize the funding. So $18.3 million was secured for 2022-23 fiscal year. Our county was awarded $353,788, which was based upon the listed funding formula factors up the top. This amount can be spent down from 2022 through the end of the grant in 2026. As you already know, it is almost the end of 2022-23 fiscal year. And due to delays in the release of this grant, grantees were allowed to choose whether to utilize funds for items already completed in the current fiscal year or to skip the current fiscal year and utilize funding in fiscal years 23, 24, 24, 25, and 25, 26. We chose to push the funding into the next fiscal year in order to allow us to have the greatest maximum impact. Another caveat of this funding is that should state budget allow for further funding of this grant, there's a possibility that we could receive the same amount for fiscal year 23, 24, and 24, 25, all to be spent down by year 25, 26. But both of those opportunities are contingent upon the state budget. So we do not know until they tell us. Okay, so some of the required activities are listed on the screen. We are required to partner, plan, and coordinate to expand access to all educational options under the Universal Pre-Kindergarten umbrella. We must develop an initial plan for consideration on or before June 30, 2023. There was no template for this, and so this presentation serves as the initial plan. And then a final written plan that will have a formal, written, fleshed out idea will be presented by June of 2026. So now you can see some of the allowable uses of funds. We are allowed to assess parental educational preferences, establish partnerships with inclusive preschool and multilingual programs, coordinate with special education partners, partner with our existing Quality Counts California, and facilitate the required work group, which I will talk about in the next slide. Because this is a planning grant, in order to implement any of our ideas, we must blend, braid, and layer funding from other grants. And as previously stated, a requirement of this grant is to engage the community through collaboration with educational partners. The required partners, which will be listed in the next slide, as well as others who are not listed, will help provide input to shape our formal Universal Pre-Kindergarten Plan by June of 2026. This plan will help myself and Christina to create resources and supports which meet the needs of the diverse educational landscape in our county. On the screen, you can see the vast number of partners that we must engage throughout the process. Luckily, many of these members are represented through our local planning council, services currently provided at SB CEO, established community partnership, and the UPK Community of Practice and Teacher Collaborative. For members listed whom we do not regularly engage, we must show a concerted effort to invite collaboration. As of this time, there is only one member that I have not engaged, and I will be engaging very soon. So guidance about this work group. In order to engage the large list of required members, we are allowed to utilize established meetings and are not required to bring every partner together all at one time. Through the resources and information provided to the community and gathered across the span of this grant, we will shape a plan which highlights strengths and needs of our county's UPK partners. On the next slide, I will share some of the ways we will educate families and learn from our community. Through collaboration between our Childcare Planning Council and Curriculum and Instruction, along with community partner feedback, we have developed the following goals for supporting our UPK community. We will create community resources on family options and quality, provide family and educator work groups. We will be hosting a study of UPK impacts on CSPP and private preschool facilities, as well as the same study on the impacts on LEAs or UPK. Now we'll take a little bit of a closer look. So we are currently creating two bilingual family resources. One which discusses all UPK options available to families and one which discusses quality care and considerations when choosing where to send your child. Both documents will contain both English and Spanish text housed in one double-sided document to allow our community partners to provide this information to a wide range of families without the need for multiple versions. We also hope to share this information directly with all of our UPK providers to our local libraries to be distributed at stay-in-play events, as well as potentially through radio advertisements. We will also be facilitating family focus groups to assess family preferences and perspectives on universal pre-kindergarten. Information we hope to gain is why families chose their current care provider, what families think is valuable in their child's learning environments from their children's teachers, and in accessibility of care. Lastly, we hope to find out what families hope their children will gain through their early educational experience. And Christina and I will create and distribute a survey to gather data on the impact of UPK on our providers. We will compare the needs of state-funded and private preschool programs and LEAs. The survey will ask questions about facilities, staffing, and inclusion needs. We will also ask questions regarding how many families chose to place their children in transitional kindergarten and if any families made the choice to withdraw and return to another educational option. I will be creating a new Universal Pre-Kindergarten Mixed Delivery Grant ad hoc committee under the Childcare Planning Council in order to support this work. And Christina will continue to lead the Universal Pre-Kindergarten Community of Practice and Teachers Collaborative. And we will both support one another in these new endeavors. Now I'll pass it back to Christina.
So as Christian mentioned, we're going to make sure that we leverage our current and existing platforms that we have. We have a UPK Community of Practice platform where we have monthly meetings with the school site leaders and support staff that are actually taking the charge and leading the UPK initiatives. We also are going to leverage the use of our UPK Teacher Collaborative, which is also a virtual monthly meeting where the experts in the room, our preschool, TK, and kindergarten teachers come together to collaborate and also share resources and ideas. And so we will make sure to utilize both of these collaboratives and community of practice. And so we know that with the Mixed Delivery Planning Grant, this will allow us to continue to align the multiple shifts that are needed for full implementation of UPK. And so we are now available to answer any questions or to clarify.
Much appreciated. I failed to mention that in spite of not having a template yet as to what is to be expected, you were, one of the stipulations of the grant was to have this presentation. So you've done a beautiful job. I wouldn't know. Did you send a copy of this to them that maybe?
So this is not required to be sent to the state. There will be a SNAP survey that is very lengthy come fall, where I will provide all of this again.
You guys are very patient, very understanding. Any other questions? Nadra?
Yes, thank you for having to come up with a plan for the presentation. It was very well thought out and very informative. So I did have just a couple of questions, thinking back to when my daughter was in preschool and how navigating that, you know, that environment. I know that we were able to get into a private childcare, but it was through a church or a religious institution. So when you are, excuse me, working with private center-based childcare preschools, would that include like churches and things like that?
Yes, so private encompasses all various types of private preschools, including faith-based, as well as family childcare.
Perfect. Thank you. That faith-based, that's the word I was looking for. And then in terms of parents that use private providers, will there be funding for those parents to utilize those private funders or funding that the private funders will be able to subsidize their services?
So this grant does not provide any subsidy. It is a planning grant. Christina's is an implementation grant, which is why we are having to blend and braid in order to make all of this happen. But we do have some exciting initiatives that are coming. One of them being the ARPA grant, which was secured by our Board of Supervisors. And that is direct funding that is going to increase access to infant and toddler care within our county. And that is direct funding that will go to providers.
Perfect. And then there's the last question that I had about the communication to families. Will there be a social media component in that as well?
That is on the list as well.
Awesome. Thank you.
Of course.
That's a quick question. When you work with a tribe, do you work with their kind of new education director or the elder in charge of education?
So the individual that I reached out to and have engaged with is the new education director.
The concept of working through existing networks, which to me means you're not going to be convening a meeting with everyone. You're going to be attending and participating in multiple meetings. Is that a part of the work you two have developed here? Or is that part of the grant requirement?
So we had the option to either create a whole new group where we have a whole nother meeting where we're trying to get every single listed member together all at once, or we could utilize existing meetings. And due to the fact that that list, about 80% of those people are covered by my Childcare Planning Council, it just made more sense to bring the same information to multiple groups.
Which is much more demanding on you and your time, but probably more effective as far as their participation. So kudos again for coming up with the plan. Any other questions? Okay, we will stay tuned and look forward to updates. All right, and now I'm going to ask our counsel, legal counsel, Austin, to provide a presentation on the school districts of choice. This was something that came up when we were preliminarily reviewing the intra-district transfer requests that was coming forward to us that got canceled. And it was one of the things that was pointed out that we really haven't discussed what it means. So we want to be prepared for next time. So, oh, we have a handout. All right. Austin?
Yeah, exactly. So school districts of choice, what is it? Why does that sound familiar? What does it mean? Why would somebody want to be a school district of choice? So like President Frost just mentioned, this came up last month when we almost had an IDT appeal. That was before you. It ended up being resolved before you all heard it. But the school district in question was a school district of choice. And you may have started to review their policy and thought this looked strange and what does this mean? So that's why we're here. I went digging around to see if it's going to affect this board in the future, how it might, you know, weigh on your decision in a future expulsion or IDT appeal. So that's kind of why we're here. I have a short 80, 90 slide presentation for you. Just kidding, this is very brief. But so this started in 1993. There was kind of a multi-pronged effort to provide parents and students more school options, basically. The charter law was passed sometime around then as well. And basically, this is the authorizing statute and it allows districts, all they have to do is pass a resolution and identify how many students they're willing to accept. And then they will be able to accept a student from anywhere in the state, basically. If there's more people that want a spot in that district, then they have room for it. Then they do a lottery. And there's a lot of requirements about the district not reaching out to certain populations based on things like income, race, gender, all of that stuff. And that it has to be randomized public lottery for their seats that they make available. So that's it. It went through a pretty big change. So it's been around since 93. It's been reauthorized every five years since then. There were some pretty big changes in 2017. And maybe the most germane one is funding. So normally for school districts that elect to be a district of choice, the funding follows the student. And so in the case of a basic aid district, they ended up getting 70% of the funding for a student that transferred in from a non-basic aid district. If they transferred in from another basic aid district, then there's no net impact. But if they came from... But if they came from, um, a non-basic aid district and they would get 70% of the funding, that was reduced 25% um, in 2017. And that did have some effect on the number of districts that elected. And I mean, it, you know, it takes away some of the financial incentives. So that makes sense. Um, but not as much as maybe you would expect. So the other things that changed in 2017, um, there was a, there's a lot more oversight and reporting requirements now. You have to register with the state superintendent. Um, and they're trying to keep track of all this stuff a little bit better and coming out with like different reports every few years to find out if this is something that's improving outcomes for students. And there, there've now been a couple of legislative analyst reports. Um, both of them are, are pretty interesting, um, that I can send around if anyone, um, wants to look more like the policy impacts of this stuff. Um, and the other change was it expanded the list of characteristics that districts can't consider for their selection criteria, just incorporating all of the nondiscrimination protected classes that are already written into the education code. So why would a district elect to accept students from any other district in the state without regard to their residency? Um, it may help small districts, um, spread out their fixed costs, basically. It, it kind of helps them achieve an economy of scale that maybe, uh, they wouldn't otherwise, especially if they're small enough that their enrollment is going to fluctuate quite a bit from, from year to year. Um, it may help school districts avoid, um, a predicted enrollment decline. I mean, I think since you all have a lot of experience in individual school districts, you know that these things are projected out pretty far and you can usually determine, you know, decades in advance which your enrollment may be more or less. So it, it could help with that. Um, and there were some serious funding advantages to being a district of choice that, you know, were lessened five or six years ago. Um, but that was a big incentive for a, for a long time. Um, so like I said, all you have to do, you pass a resolution, these individual school districts. Um, you say how many students you're going to accept from other districts. You register with CDE. You have to follow all the rules about who you reach out to. There's a new requirement that you put on your website, the actual application, so that parents can get to it. Um, if there's, you know, more requests than you have spots for, you have to do a lottery. Um, and there's also limitations in the law about how many people, um, may be allowed to transfer out of a home district. So schools can actually cap it. Um, I think it's 3% annually. Um, there's also some limits on, um, students transferring out if, for instance, they're in a really difficult budgetary situation. And they can, so they can limit transfers out for that reason because there is a, a little bit of a budgetary impact if they lose the funding from a student or two. So what does it look like in Santa Barbara County? There's, there's only two. There's the one that we almost heard from last month, which was college. And then, uh, Vista Del Mar is also a school district of choice. Those are both K-6 school districts. And as you probably know, they're both very small, so it kind of makes sense. Um, but they may want to accept some students from outside for that predictability factor, um, economies of scale, all that kind of stuff. There's, there's only 49 statewide. It's kind of interesting when you look at the map, most of them are, um, in and around Eastern LA County and then the Bay Area. Um, and those, there's like five that are 80% of the students that are served by districts of choice. Um, I think Riverside is the biggest one. A lot of this comes from that legislative analyst report, uh, that came out in 2017. And then they, they did it again 2022. All the students are demographically diverse, which is, which is a good thing. That means all the targeting and all that stuff is, isn't being violated. Um, and then the reasons for transfer they often cite are students who want to pursue specific thematic programs that are offered by the districts of choice, like the college preparatory programs. And then some kids just eat a fresh start for personal reasons or, or for whatever. So from your perspective, there's, there's no real role for you in doing anything regarding districts of choice. Um, it's kind of just an FYI, I guess, for you in case we get another IDT from a district of choice. Um, they're allowed to still do inter-district transfers, obviously. You're, you're probably going to see much more limited, um, acceptances of IDTs in those cases because they have a specific number of seats allocated as a district of choice. Um, but, you know, if somebody doesn't get a spot, there's no appeal or anything like that. Nothing comes before you guys. Um, the other place I thought it might come up is a, a district of choice can revoke the transfer of a student if they end up getting recommended for expulsion by their home district. I don't necessarily think that's going to happen here because like I said, the only two right now are K-6 and we just like don't see expulsions from K-6 schools. Yeah, knock on wood. Um, but I guess, you know, a bigger school district could elect to become a district of choice and maybe you'd see something like that. So yeah, like I said, they can still have IDTs, um, but it doesn't really affect the IDT analysis other than, you know, maybe a district would make a decision based on the, the funding or something like that. Um, but oftentimes, you know, you'll, you'll see language like we did in the policy from college where they're only going to grant an IDT in a very limited situation. So, um, you know, there's not really much to weigh, I guess, from your perspective. And that's it.
I have a couple of questions for clarification, Austin. This is very helpful. It really is. You've done a good job. It's not your fault. I have questions. I sometimes don't hear everything right. Um, would this apply to charter schools? A charter school in a, in a district?
I wouldn't think so. Um, I'm trying to think of how, I, I, I can't imagine it would.
Okay.
But I, I don't know a direct answer to that, but.
Because it's the school district, not a specific school. Is that correct? So it's the school district. So even if a school district says I'm a district of choice, such as college, if they have more than one school in their district, who decides, what can the person? They're both in schools of choice.
Yeah.
The person coming in can specify a specific school or does the district decide which one?
I haven't seen it because both of ours are single school districts.
Oh, yeah, that makes sense.
I, I mean, maybe they could put that in their application or something, but I, I wouldn't think that they're going to be allowed to, you know, pick the school they go to. But, you know, if they're, if they're trying to transfer into Riverside because there's a program at one school or something, you know, maybe they have a way of, of sorting that out. It just doesn't, doesn't come up here.
It wouldn't apply to us right now anyhow. Just like you said. Okay. Thank you very much. Any other comments, questions, Mr. Porter?
Yes, so we do have a responsibility for the overall financial stability of our school districts. Kind of at the higher level anyway. So I understand that this district of choice helped Vista Del Mar kind of limp around, limp along a little further before it almost imploded a couple of years ago. Um, are they still able to leverage this to, to kind of stay financially to float? Has this continued to help them or is that no longer a thing?
You know, I think that first of all, they, they had that just a few years ago before the 2017. Many, many, many families that, um, opted in, um, for district of choice. And Vista then was able to realize the, what was the percentage, Austin, at that time?
It was 70.
70, yeah, which was pretty significant. And at 2017, when the legislation changed, so many of the families had to return back, um, because the financial gain was so minimal. Now with the students that are in, uh, like, um, attending Vista, they're most, most of those students, if not all, are in the attendance area of Vista. And so, um, I, I, I don't see that they're using district of choice to, um, receive students as they did before, 2017.
Thank you for your presentation. I, um, had a question about if a, if they, if the board passes the resolution to accept, say, 20 students. If they are under that 20 minimum, they automatically have to accept those students. Is that correct?
Um, yes, basically, that's.
So we wouldn't see those appeals then?
No, you wouldn't see any, any kind of, there's no way to appeal.
Right, okay.
I mean, I think a, a family would just have to take the school district to court if they felt like they were, you know, discriminated against on something that's listed in the statute.
So, but they have, parents have an option to go through the school of choice program or an inter-district transfer?
Yeah.
That was the issue?
Yeah.
How it was coming, how it was being presented?
And the trick is, you know, while you get, so assuming you're going from a non-basic aid to a basic aid district, you would get that 25% funding allocation for the student, that doesn't happen with an IDT. So not that that was the case or any kind of decision that was made like, like the one that we might've saw last year or last month anyway, but that's just like an extra little thing. You know, you're not going to get the funding if it's an IDT versus. And that might be why a district elects to be a school of choice. They might say, well, we're getting all these IDT requests, so maybe, maybe we just need to do this so that we actually get paid for it.
Austin, thank you very much for that presentation. We might need a refresher course if we, if we deal with that again, but at least it's there somewhere. Okay, I'm going to move on to the, oh.
Hate to even bring up the la, I, when we find out even at the 11th hour, um, an IDT is full, don't ask questions. I give everybody credit. But did this, do you know, did the district of choice, was that a factor in the resolution? Or was it independent of that? Or do you know?
I think it was independent.
Okay.
It was, it was an end of the year kind of thing.
Oh, that's right. Okay.
Okay, on to the consent agenda. You see the items that are included on this, uh, the minutes and the credential registration, acceptance of donation, declaration of surplus, all the normal things. And I would entertain a motion to approve. So done. We'll pull number 16 from the consent. And a second please. Okay. Uh, call for the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Extentions? That's it. All right, let's go back to item 16.
Under number, item number six, President and Board comments. The very last bullet point, it says, "Letter of Support for County Boards of Education and School District Boards to Sign On Regarding SB 691 About K Through, K Through Two Universal Screening of Risk of Dyslexia." I think it should say Board Member Michelle DeWort signed the letter. Cause the board didn't sign the letter. I think we should specify that my name rather than, so because there's no confusion that the Board of Education
It wasn't something we voted on them.
No, it's not.
Okay.
It was just information.
I think the item was that, that this topic was circulating and that there were county boards of education, school board members signing on some. And so, Michelle, I'm not sure that you reported that you signed on it. It, but did you? Okay, okay, perfect. You want to clarify? Okay, okay, that's what it was. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Second please.
I'll second.
All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Extentions? All right, number 16 with the modification of Michelle DeWort signed the letter on behalf of this district, I guess it would be. Or as an individual member, as an individual. Okay. Um, and now, whoops, get back to here. So we, did I vote on that? Yes. Then we are now on to our action items. And number 20 should be familiar to those of you that have been around for a year because every year we have the Forest Reserve Fund apportionment. And I'm going to turn this over to Susan for a little explanation.
Thank you. And really the explanation is that there was a, uh, relatively recent slight modification on how the funds will be apportioned. So I would like to turn it over to Steve or Debbie Brack. I'm not sure who will take that seat. Great, thank you to share that with you.
All right, so on the new table that you received, uh, that delineates the apportionment, um, on, okay. So I'll give it just a moment. So essentially on the previous one you received, um, Huayama Joint Unified had zero students that resided in a forest preserve, uh, forest reserve area. Um, and that number has been updated since to four students. So those four students have been added to the table. Uh, and for that portion of the funds, um, that we distribute on a per pupil basis to the districts that have students residing in those areas, it's been redistributed. So, um, that's the only change that you would have seen, um, on the table that you previously received.
Was posted, if it isn't already, and then wanted to see, I'll turn it back to you, uh, Mrs. Frost for a board action. Please.
Hearing that modification, um, I'd like a motion for approving, or yeah, approving the 2122 Forest Reserve Fund apportionment.
So move.
You'll have a second.
Thank you. Discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Extentions? Motion passes. Okay, now we have a recommendation for approval of use of 2324 Prop 30 Educational Protection Account revenues. And I think, again, if there are any questions on this, Steve would be more than happy to respond. Any questions on that? Thank you. Thank you, Michelle. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Extentions? Motion passes. Okay, item number 22, and I'm going to ask Susan to walk us into this one.
Thank you so much. Um, last month, the board, um, approved the lot of leases that are, that you see already on, um, attached, in the attachment under 22. We added one and that add addition is in yellow. And for right now, what we're thinking about is if, as we add any further, we'll continue to add to this list. You can see the full, um, scope. But in any case, it's really just the one that we're, we're seeking approval on. Earlier today, you heard that our Fitzgerald School is expanding from two classrooms to four. And that's at Barnell Road. Um, and we, the only, the only, two things happened. One, a request from Santa Maria Benita and Santa Maria Joint Union for us to expand the courses, the classes from one each to two each. And two, we needed the space. Um, so at, at the time that the districts were requesting it, we didn't have the space. At the same time, Early Care and Education, Janelle Willis is here as Director under Bridget Boblett supervision. ECE is expanding. You're hearing about that. We need a lot more support. Many of you have been to the North County Office, have seen many, many individuals working in, in, in one, in one space. So we thought, you know what, perhaps two birds one time. And so ECE has, through the support of our Facilities Director and many people who were involved here, search is a bit like Goldilocks. One was to this, one was, I don't know, and that one's just right. And it feels like this one is just right. It's off of Main Street. It has a sufficient room to move the individuals at Barnell Road to that space and then add. And then it'll allow for our classroom space to expand. So the request is here in this table format. Um, at the time of submitting this to you, we weren't sure if it was a go, that we were really wanting it to, to be a go. So we added it to the agenda, hoping, thinking, we'll, we'll see how we land. At this point, we, we would like for it to be a go. We're seeking for the approval to move forward on this lease. And I want to see if I've missed anything. Mary Beth, Steve, Bridget, Bridganelle, are we good with that? Okay, great. So then I'll turn it back over to the board for consideration. Thank you.
I have one question. Is this out by the hospital then, on East Main?
This was, excuse me, as Mary Beth Gallas comes up to the podium, this used to be used by, I believe, Dignity Health Spaces, but we'll tell you where the location exactly is.
Um, this is on Main Street. Um, it is on the other side of the freeway from the hospital. It's equidistant from the freeway.
Okay.
But, um, heading to the west. Um, it is across from, if you know, there's a Vons and a CVS on Main Street.
Okay.
It's on the south side. Um, it is above, it's the entire, uh, second floor area above some retail shops where people find themselves, like an ice cream shop and a butcher store.
Oh.
Um, but this is dedicated office space and it was Dignity's billing office. Um, but this is dedicated office space and it was Dignity's billing office for ten years.
I'm familiar with it. Okay, great. Yes, absolutely. Actually, they can, Dino's Liquor Store isn't too far away either. I'm sorry. I probably shouldn't have said that. Any other comments? Questions? Discussion? I'll entertain a motion to approve. Second? Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Extentions? Motion passes. Okay, where are we now? Okay, number twenty-three. Recommend approval of revisions to the Santa Barbara County Special Education Local Plan Area, the SFA Plan. Uh, and the superintendent is recommending approval of these revisions. Comments? Questions? There's an, um, memo on the very last page of the board book from Kirsten. Not Christian. No questions on that? Discussion? May I hear a motion?
Move approval?
Second, please.
Second.
Thank you, Nadra. Any discussion? No, then I will call for the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Extentions? Motion moves. And then our informational item is the standard personnel report. Uh, and at this time, we have no future agenda items listed. There are, there's nothing brought forward from the board.
I, I actually would like to, um, ask, um, it seems to be a theme with the schools that I visited and again with, um, the LPAC, um, presentation. But I was wondering if it'd be possible if we could maybe have a presentation about positive behavior intervention support services and strategies and how that works, um, at some point. So, that's all I have.
Any other? Okay, hearing none, uh, we, in a minute, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn to the next regu- well, it's kind of a special meeting of the board to be held a week from tomorrow on June ninth at ten AM. So, a lot of different changes to that. And that will be our board approval of the LCAP and the budget. And I don't know what other surprises Dr. Salcedo may have for us.
Two, two other, um, presentations that do need to come forward at that meeting, as they do every year. Um, the supports that our office provides for differentiated assistance and, um, uh, gosh, differentiated assistance support and LCAP support. Thank you. That's my pause there. And then our local indicator progress that, um, Bridget Bobbit will present for our own local control and accountability plan. Those are pieces of the, um, not only approval, seeking approval of the two plans, but then two presentations as well. And that is all.
And that is all. Okay. So, it won't be a three-hour meeting.
Okay.
I have to tell my dog sitter how long I need to have her.
Just really quick, I want for the record, I meant LCAP, not LPAC. I think I said LPAC, so I just want to. It's been a while.
You were talking about your sweater, LPAC.
Okay, then I would entertain a motion to adjourn. Nobody wants to leave. Thank you. We have a motion in a second. And all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Extentions? We are adjourned.